Good evening. It is very pleasant to be able to recognize our student athletes from our winter sports season who received all county honors, a very select group of both men and women, and not an easy distinction to earn. In addition to recognizing them tonight, we also want to recognize six of our winter varsity athletic teams who received the New York State Scholar Athlete Team Award from the New York State National Athletic Association for having averages 90 feet or higher. And our combined averages of all of our winter varsity athletic teams was 89.41, a great achievement. So what we'll do is we'll recognize our student athletes who received the all county honors. When I call your name, please come forward and receive your certificate. And then once everyone's recognized, we'll take a group picture. Okay, so now before we do, we'd like to start by recognizing a whole county performer in girls varsity basketball, Peyton Ryan. Our county honors varsity cheerleading, Chandler Petty. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion, yes.
Okay, recognition.
So we have some small groups being recognized tonight. We'll start with Mrs. Haran. Would you like to join us?
Good evening. It is very pleasant to be able to recognize our student athletes from our winter sports season who received all county honors, a very select group of both men and women, and not an easy distinction to earn. In addition to recognizing them tonight, we also want to recognize six of our winter varsity athletic teams who received the New York State Scholar Athlete Team Award from the New York State National Athletic Association for having averages 90 feet or higher. And our combined averages of all of our winter varsity athletic teams was 89.41, a great achievement. So what we'll do is we'll recognize our student athletes who received the all county honors. When I call your name, please come forward and receive your certificate. And then once everyone's recognized, we'll take a group picture. Okay, so now before we do, we'd like to start by recognizing a whole county performer in girls varsity basketball, Peyton Ryan. Our county honors varsity cheerleading, Chandler Petty. And all county boys varsity winter track, Greg Bové and Kevin Cassidy. I also want to recognize these individuals, obviously in addition to getting all county honors, have received a number of other distinctions. And usually we just recognize our all county performers, but I also want to give a special shout out to Greg Bové, who just recently won the New Swell Scholar Athlete Award, which is incredible. Would you please don't find us to mention what Greg decided to do with the money he won? Well, the New Swell Scholar Athlete is supported by the VEPAG Federal Credit Union. What they do is they recognize each recipient with a $1,000 grant. And Greg, when he received word that a $1,000 grant comes along with it, he decided to donate that $1,000 back to the family of the farmer who just recently passed away in a tragic fire. A great, great recognition by Greg and just a great compassionate act by Greg.
Okay, Mrs. Haran. Is Mr. Alpik here? Okay, we also have some rec. overall, let me ask, is Ms. Culver here or any of our teachers here?
So every year, our members of our art department select some of the really outstanding work that our students are doing. And I know that many of you know from visiting our art show every year that we hold on the day of the budget vote that we have some very, very talented students here. So Ms. Culver and Mrs. Caulfield had submitted the work of the students to, I'm not sure, the legislative?
It's the New York State Art Teachers Association Legislative Exhibit in Oldham, New York, it was during March of this year.
So I had the opportunity to visit when I was up there for my conference, and really the workup that we see statewide is astounding. And I'm very proud of both of you for, you know, enabling our students to be seen as well. So at this time, we'd like to-
Do you like the answers or call anyone's students?
Sure.
Okay, so I'd like to call up Ashley Green. Congratulations, Ashley did a beautiful painting that incorporated complementary colors and concentric circles, and it was very, very beautiful. And that's a great job. And also Lorenzo LaSalle. Are you there, everyone? No? I'm sorry, Lorenzo's picture also is very beautiful. She incorporated the same elements, plasma. Congratulations.
I'd like to call up Gina Menzel. Gina did a beautiful portrait graphic study of Marilyn Monroe. And we also have Kira Corfert. She did a large white chuffle study of Elizabeth Mizziro. Very beautiful work.
We're very proud of our students also. You've shown off their work, and you've congratulated us, but we are so excited to be on your show with our students here too, so thank you.
Okay, and last but not least, mid-March, I had the opportunity alone telling my colleagues, some of our board trustees, to attend this annual scope dinner that was held out at Villa Lombardi's. It is an annual event, over 900 people were in attendance, it's a really big deal. And at that time, we were able to honor people that were really important to the educational environment here in West Islip, as were other districts able to do the same thing. So we had four honorees this year, so I would like to ask them to join us. Anne DeRosa was honored at the School Board Service Award in appreciation. Our own Mrs. Wendy Duffy. Appreciation for her outstanding service, and as you know, Mrs. Duffy will be leaving us at the end of July, so kind of work my life. Rob Musal from our business office. Rockwell Purchasing Agent. So Rob, thank you for joining us this evening. And Anne Bean is one of our teachers, she's the librarian at Udel, and Anne is here. You have your plaque of gifts, great. So what happened was they were all awarded their plaques that evening, and we wanted to make sure that we had an in-house picture that we can share on our website and, you know, certainly with our community, because this is a very special thing. So congratulations to the four of you, and thank you very much for being with us here in Washington.
Congratulations again to everyone who was recognized, prayed by all. Personnel, please, start.
Thank you, Michelle. May I have a motion for the approval of a child bearing leave of absence, Kristen Tinson, reading effective April 4, 2018.
So, discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion, yes.
May I have a motion for the approval of a child bearing leave of absence, Antonio Morium, Special Education, effective March 21st, 2018.
Move, discuss, all in favor? Opposed? Motion, yes.
And varsity, they were the second, beautiful names we wish to give them much love and recognition. May I have a motion for the approval of a child bearing leave of absence for Morium Sanchez, Special Education, effective August 29, 2018, June 30, 2019.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of a leave of absence for Beth Behrini, Social Studies, effective August 29, 2018, June 30, 2019.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of a leave of absence for Ariana Stubbin, reading effective August 29, 2018, June 30, 2019.
So, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of the resignation of Patricia St. Quomani, Cafeteria A, effective March 21st, 2018.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Sandra Brady, full-time assistant cook, effective June 29, 2018, after 17 years of service to the district.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Joseph Demeo, groundskeeper one, effective June 29, 2018, after 40 years of service to the district.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Albert Haldenway, custodian work of one, effective June 29, 2018, after 17 years of service to the district.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Patricia Pellegrino, bus driver, effective June 23, 2018, after 30 years of service to the district.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Dominic Grandazzo, custodian work of one, effective July 1, 2018, after 18 years of service in the district.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Teresa Rue, part-time assistant cook, effective June 23, 2018, after 12 years of service in the district.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Geraldine Savistan, head bus driver, effective July 7, 2018, after 50 years of service in the district.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Geraldine Terrell, bus driver, effective June 23, 2018, after 33 years of service to the district.
I said just 33 years? No move. Discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
I would just like to say that, you know, all of these support positions are those dedicated to the job of the teacher, that is easier, and we all as educators couldn't do it without them. Collectively, there's over 200 years of service here, and every one of these people really deserve a beautiful retirement, because they're really dedicated, loyal employees, so we will miss them.
May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Maria McCaughy, accountant, effective April 30, 2018.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of substitute senior cook Veronica Tarduno, effective April 13, 2018.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of the District-wide Club's advisors for 2017-18 as listed in your background.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
May I have a motion for the approval of the substitute teachers as listed in your background.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion, yes. Dr. Rue, curriculum update.
Good evening, everyone. As part of the curriculum update for this month, I wanted to share with you the New York State ESSA Plan. Usually I have given you some information, little tidbits about what's kind of going on throughout the state. Recently, we had Dr. Schwartz, who you can see is the Associate Commissioner, come down to speak to all the Southern County Assistant Superintendent for curriculum. Dr. Schwartz is, you know, one of our own, he is from Long Island, and he always makes these presentations to us. His presentation was way over 60 slides, all right? So I promise you, I tried to take it down, and so down to 12 slides, including the title. Oh, I gotta check this before that it worked from here. Is Fern can help me out? So what is the Every Student Succeeds Act? That is the federal law that's a requirement for schools, for the districts and for schools and districts to relate to their accountability and their school improvement. So ESSA was passed in 2015 at the federal level, we replaced No Child Left Behind, and all states, and New York State, submitted their plan to the Department of Education of September of this year. New York State, they helped over 13 public hearing statewide. There was an ESSA think tech, they had an ESSA think meeting where they had over 270 speakers. They received and reviewed over 800 comments via email or mail. They used the, again, I mentioned the think tech, the Title One Committee of Practitioners, and they had regional meetings in both the winter and the spring. And then, of course, they collaborated with some national experts as well. So part of the plan that New York State submitted was to ask for some waivers. So the first one was a double testing of middle school students taking the Regents exams. So for our students who take Algebra I Regents, previous years, not last year, but previous to that, they would also have to take the math, eighth grade math assessment, but the double testing was removed, so that's not that required anymore. We asked to have ELA tests in which we had, we do eliminate it for our second-year English Language Learners, and that was denied. And we also requested in our plan from New York State that we have all grade test students with disabilities, that was also denied at the federal level. So here, the accountability system has added a few things, but you can see for all schools that the indicators are using the English Language Arts Test, the math tests, science, the progress for L students, and looking at how chronic absenteeism, which you know is absent 10% of our instructional days. That's for all schools, for the high school, also social studies will be included, graduation rate, and college career and civic readiness. Now, some of the things that they include was the continuation of having the law required that 95% of students in each testing subgroup take the appropriate state test. New York State is saying that they are going to work with parent schools and districts to increase the participation. They will also translate math and science tests into more languages, and when funding becomes available, they are studying to create Language Arts tests in students' languages. And they also are saying that the New York State Education Department, that they've had the commitment, is in the plan for working with districts to ensure our culturally responsive sustaining practices. So, the next slide, and then the left slide after that, really talks about the goals, the measures, and accountability. And this, if you can really see all the different pieces to it. So you see on the top, the student academic achievement, with the school's measures and achievements on the state assessments, the ELA and math, and science for high school, again, the social studies, and it's measured in two ways. One is based on continuously enrolled students who should have been assessed, and one is based on only on those students without test scores. So they, that becomes the weighted academic achievement index. Dr. Schwartz went on and on, and there's, you can get his presentation up on the New York State website. It's very thorough, it talks about performance, how they use that, how they use the performance index. The only thing that is different than the previous years of the performance index, it used to have the same weighting for students to score three and four, there's a little bit more weighting for four than three, but still, you have nothing for those students to score one. And so that becomes your weighted academic achievement index, and then for the purpose of differentiation, that is also used with the core subject performance index for all students, and then achievement index level if you arrange from one to four. So that's what we will see schools and school districts getting a rating, accountability on a point to four rating. So then that is determined by composite score by using those different scores. The Student Growth Score, again, is based on the 480 ELA math assessments. The English Language Traditions measures are based on the NICE class, the L students, and of course, the chronic absentee measure is due to the CTE techniques that we have. So that is, again, 10% of our work in instructional days. So here, we have the College and Career Civic Writing Index. So high schools, the percentage of students in accountability cohort will show they are prepared for college, career, and civic engagement once they exit high school. So different pathways are, have been offered for students, and we are also pursuing, which I mentioned in the previous curriculum updates, we're looking to more of those CTE pathways for our students, as we've been talking about the second pathway, but we look at really at a lot of different pathways, but also looking at the credentials where we have the opportunity to have students walk the way, if there's some type of certification and they have an interest in it. You know, specifically what I can talk about is on child, early childhood, we've been looking to partner with some other schools in order to be able to get that credential into the Rave program here, with that Little Lines program, where students are getting hands-on experience working with preschoolers, and very little, you know, more is needed for them in order to get a credential. So we're pursuing that and hoping that Rave is offered actually. From that, those scores is what the state has done in the past, and they will continue to do, is they identify you in one of these four categories. You can see the comprehensive support and improvement for schools, that score are low performing and using all those accountability numbers, you know, in many different areas. The target support improvement schools, that score if you have one subgroup that's not performing in those accountability areas. And then schools included standing, and then recognition schools. So, you know, previously, you may have remembered, we were a local assistant camp school, which was the previous name for the target support and improvement score, when we had some, we didn't have the numbers that support for our L students, so that was a subgroup, so that's an example of, you know, it's basically the same, we're using a little bit different terminology for that. There are required actions for schools who are comprehensive, comprehensive, I'm sorry, comprehensive support, improvement schools, and the target support improvement schools. So these schools who are identified as such must conduct a comprehensive diagnostic needs assessment and develop a school improvement plan. The improvement plan must be approved by the school and the district, and if it's the comprehensive support, it must be also approved by the state. If you are that for multiple years, it must be approved by the Commission of Education. There must be PD professional development connected to that plan. There must be evidence-based intervention strategies used, and you can only use, you know, effective and highly effective teachers, and must engage students in a participatory process in the 2019, 2020 school year. So again, if schools don't make progress, they are principal monitoring, then they become principal needs assessment, then they have to get assistance from their local RIT, their VOCs, the teacher centers, and they must, again, always have that plan approved by the Commission of Education at that point.
Haran, what is the first one who will be identified in one of these categories? Is it the 1920 school year?
No, next school year, they will be, yeah, next school year, so I will show you the timeline.
So based upon the standards, the criteria that we met with this school year?
Yes. Yes, that's the timeline. The regulations have been, they're being drafted, they haven't been adopted yet, but they'll have, you know, you have a whole school year, and they have the regulations, so it's just, you know, it's, but, so that is what they're saying. The 2019, 2020 school year is for the financial transparency, and I'll go into that, I do have a slide to that as well. Okay, so districts and schools failing to meet 95% participation rate, what are the consequences? So students who were factored into accountability determination regarding this school or district's ELA math achievement, the lack of participation affects the composite achievement level, the progress level, which can turn back to school or district accountability stats. So the terminology they use is schools that persistently and substantially fail to meet the 95% participation requirement must take action. And Dr. Schwartz there said, okay, so what does that mean? Persistently and substantially fail to meet the 95 participation? They haven't defined what that actually means yet, this isn't working on definition, and they will be telling us, so does that mean one year, two years, what does that mean? What does that mean for? So once we find out that information, and it's shared with us, we will be sharing that with you. So what will we need to do if we do not agree, fail to persistently and substantially fail to meet the 95 participation rate? The schools and districts must conduct a participation rate self-assessment. The school and the district must develop a participation rate improvement plan and at least an analysis of the cost of the lower participation, and list the potential ways to solve the problems that the school will pursue in the following school year. If the school ranks at the bottom 10%, participation statewide, it must have been self- If the school ranks at the bottom 10%, participation rate wise, it must submit self-assessment and the plan to the Commission of Education for approval. Additionally, these schools will not be recognized as reward schools. We have recently, have been in our high school, have been recognized several times as a reward school, so that is something to consider as well. They will not be able to be blue written schools if they fail to meet the participation requirement. And schools may not be removed from priority focus or research leadership status unless they meet the 95% participation requirement goal. So, New York State is currently in the process of developing a guidance document, which they say will provide instructions to the schools identified as being required to develop a local participation plan. And they will say is that, some of it might be that it needs to be made to partner with district, other districts, VOCs, or the New York State Education Department to create that plan. So, here's the financial transparency requirement. So, the state and the court parts now will have to have this transparency requirement that uses pupil, per pupil comparisons that are for the districts to examine their practices, and your expenditures have to answer some key questions, like, do your actual spending practices align with state's defaults? Is the district using its resources equitably? And are there areas where over or underspending could be identified in the program? One of the things that our group was concerned about is, you know, even within districts, you may have different needs within from building to building. And Dr. Schwartz said that is, they are, that is challenged to the State Education Department, and they are considering that in the guidance department about what will those differences be, and what role will that data plan be, why they obviously the state can't tell. So, the plan, already we're in spring 2018, but the permissioned regulations have been drafted with the approved, New York State has the plan approved by the federal, state education, federal's education department. And then, it was presented to the Board of Regents, and as Dr. Schwartz is one of the, you know, I'm sorry, is that are disseminating that information, and were responsible to disseminate that to all of you, and they expect in the summer, in, you know, July, the adoption of the permissioned regulations, and then, you know, months later, they're going to be using that in order to determine the accountability of determinations. So, in the long run, that, they will also look to see about, so you see the difference about the reporting requirements for districts, but they've also revised, it used to be called the consolidated application schools, so it's where the term, whatever money is coming from, it's now the ESSA grant that we use, and they're going to revise that, once again, that is, they're going to change the directions of that. Let's see, so, I had mentioned in fall of 2018, they're going to release a new accountability determinations and classify schools as being in good standing, targeted for support improvement, or comprehensive support improvement. And they will also use the new, use, they won't be able to recognize the recognition schools without, they will do that in, I mean, then following school year, then later on, if there are recognition schools, that that will be announced as well.
What other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rulon. Okay, Mr. Mahalik will report on the meeting of the Finance Committee.
Good evening. Finance Committee, Finance Committee met on April 10, 2018. Committee members present with Ron McGinnis, Scott Brady, and myself. Board members in attendance were Steve Geller and Kevin O'Connor. Administrator's present with Darnett Burns, superintendent with Duffey, assistant superintendent of business. Other present was Debbie Falcone, treasurer, proud to sell the purchasing agent, Pat Robinson, internal claims order. Purpose of the meeting was to review the warrants for the monthly discussion of current fiscal matters. The meeting calls call to order at 8:02 PM. First, we had the treasurer's report, which one of the extracurricular for February 2018, was presented and accepted by the committee. We then had financial statements for the period of 7/1/17 to 2/28/18 were presented. And then, after the internal claims order report, which was presented and accepted by the committee. One of the assistant manager audit trail for 3/1/18 to 3/23/18 was presented and accepted by the committee. We had the payroll certification for March 9, 2018, and March 23, 2018, was presented and accepted by the committee. We had the review of the warrants, and the Finance Committee received the warrants. We reviewed the board agenda and finance items. We had the approval of budget transfers presented and accepted by the committee, this initiative of the school board. We had the approval of surplus. We had a transportation, we had a 2001 GMC van, which had mechanical failure and body corrosion. We had the transportation of 2000 Chevy Blazer, which had transmission failure. We had the approval of the 2017, 2018 health service contract with the South Huntington Union Preschool District, 30 students, at $817.22. We had the approval of the 2018, 2019 bid extension. And one was with the Suffolk Oil Driving School, it's the in-car driver education instructions with vehicles. The Long Island Equipment Service, which is a refrigeration and baring service. Advantage Music, which is the sheet music and instructional materials. The Commercial Instrumental Services, which is the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning service contract. Bain Mechanical Services Incorporated, which is the boiler maintenance. And Ideal Fence Claw, which is the giddy and chain link fencing. That concluded our meeting, and adjourned at 8:06 PM.
Thank you. And, Mr. LaRosa, we'll discuss the meeting of the Education Committee.
Certainly. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for coming out. Islam, can you hear me? Yes? Not enough. All right, the Education Committee, as always, meets prior to this meeting, which happens once a month. Today, we met at 7:15 in the district boardroom conference room. Present for myself, Steve Geller, Kevin O'Connor, Ferdinand Burns, and Dr. Rulon. Who in this? You and Paul next. These fine gentlemen also joined us. They are so intrigued by us, that all of us have to have a talk. We first heard from Dr. Rulon regarding our math program at the elementary school level. They have been meeting to discuss different avenues within the curriculum for us to pursue, and it's decided that the Education Committee viewed proposal for the adoption of dimensioned learning as a matched resource based upon the methods of Singapore math. I believe this will be replacing Go Math, yes?
Okay.
Okay, too. The current math program has some curriculum gaps that were identified by the teachers, and we need to recover from that, so we will be using that for the 2018, 2019 school year, and the school board will be presenting with that for approval at some point, yes? Also, we noted that there was computer-based testing this week, this school year, our sixth grade and eighth grade included New York State English Language Arts tests on their Chromebooks. We definitely anticipated a huge number of reviews, and there is also a moratorium on using those tests to, as part of the teacher APPR score, I think so. And so, we felt this is a good time to introduce it to the middle schools. We had a smooth first day, and did run into pupil issues the second day, that worked with us. The elementary buildings administered paper-based English Language Arts assessments, assuming some grades raised aside. The building principals reported all of them very smoothly. Overall, the percentage of students receiving the assessment was 64% of the elementary schools and 76% of the middle schools. Meeting adjourned was at 7:05 PM.
Thank you, Mr. LaRosa.
I just would like to make one note, I just wanted before we get some escapes, maybe Dr. Rulon, I want to congratulate you, and thank you very much for being invited as a, to do a podcast on something really cool called Math to Leadership. And so, delivering this podcast is something that the Education Committee invites learned educators to do in order to share their knowledge of what they're doing in their own school district with a lot of people out there. And Dr. Rulon was invited to do that, I want to say congratulations to you, and thank you very much for your work on the gap in education. You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor will discuss the meeting of the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Geller. Good evening, everybody. Buildings and Grounds Committee met this past Tuesday, April 10, at District's office. Committee members present with myself, Mr. Brady, and Mr. Mahalik. Other board members in attendance, from Mr. Geller and Mr. McGinnis. Administrator's present with Mrs. Burns, Mrs. Duffy, and Mrs. Vasey. And the meeting was called to order at 8:20 PM. We discussed renovating the high school cafeteria C to a senior cafeteria, Bistro style. The committee supported this idea and looks forward to getting further details on this. The senior cafeteria, we hope, may encourage more students to stay on campus during lunch. Mrs. Vasey reported that a $69,000 rebate check was recently received from PSCNG for the LED retrofit job that was completed in March at the high school, and it was noted that this check more than covered the cost of the retrofit job. Paying work has recently been completed in Westbrook Building, and Mrs. Vasey reported that he negotiated to AM Sidewalk at no additional cost to allow our cheerleaders who practice at the building, students staff, and tenant, and visitors to safely access the northeast entry door without walking in the market. A cloud drain was reported at the high school, that exposed multiple leaks in the science wing. This problem is being addressed and may require some masonry demolition work to resolve. Two new interior door sets were installed in the UG cafeteria, and the committee also received a bond update. Phase three bids were scheduled to be opened today, April 12, and I assume they were. Phase two B, more contracting, has finished punch list items found by roof manufacturer. Leech insulation is now completed District Y. Window repair systems have been finished. Has finished all work except for Beach Street Middle School due to a delay and some parts being available from the manufacturer. And phase two C of the bond, PNM Door has completed their work. In addition, they have finished the demolition and installation of two sets of exterior doors in the back of the boys' gym at the high school. And Lexan window replacement work is finishing up at Vadio and moving on to manage up next. And the meeting was adjourned at 8:35 PM.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. And Mr. McGinnis will discuss the meeting of the Committee on Special Ed, Preschool Special.
Thank you. The committee met this morning in District Office. Had, the meeting began at 8:00 AM. The committee members present with myself and Mr. LaRosa. Administrator's present were team down with Dr. Rulon. As usual, we discussed the CSE and PSC recommendations for the month over in order. We are in full swing on manual reviews, and we'll have that wrapped up in your future. And we discussed several student placements, and the meeting adjourned at 8:00.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. And Mr. Brady will discuss the meeting of the Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Geller. So, the Security and Safety Committee meeting met March 13 at the FBE, the middle school library. The meeting was called to order at 6:30 PM. Members present with myself, Mr. Zado, Mrs. Burns, Dr. Rulon, Mr. Rand, Mr. Manu Fiskal, Dr. Markwood, Ms. Morrison, Mr. Mullins, Mr. Phil Farrell, Ms. Pratt, James Vasey, and Joe Nicolosi. Other members in attendance were Mr. Geller and Mr. Mahalik, as well as Mr. Girilaski. So, the committee discussed at the time the student walkouts, which were scheduled to be the following day. I have to say that the alternatives to leaving the building and the activities out of setup on the administrators all went very well, and I think we're all pleased with the outcome and sensitivity that they used to recognize the tragedies. We also discussed current security initiatives, the committee reviewed initiatives that have been taken to address any vulnerabilities in security of the school buildings, including the use of cameras surveillance and single-point entry. Considerations for improved security, there were various ideas that were discussed to increase security in and around the buildings, including adding a dog booth to the high school, a second intercom station in Beach School, an auto call system, door alarms, and then, a central receiving model for district deliveries was suggested to minimize visits from outside vendors, and the viability of requiring students to carry and or wear badges was explored. The district civil security audit provided a comprehensive threat assessment, as well as active shooter drills and participation in Project Share, which is a new sub-county initiative whereby law enforcement would have immediate access to the district campus system in the event of an emergency. Policy and practice review, we did recommend that the district go to a closed campus model and work to minimize student drop-offs, which is of particular concern at the high school. We also discussed additional measures that were included in the 2018, 19 budget to address student socio-emotional needs, and the meeting was adjourned at 7:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Mrs. Duffy will discuss financial matters and business cycles.
For the treasurer's report, we do not have the report tonight. So, the next item is the budget transfers. I have motion to approve the budget transfers for the general fund, number 3475, and number 3479.
So, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And one other, for the capital fund, budget transfer number 3474.
So, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I have motion to approve the health service contract to South Huntington School District in the amount of $24,005.16.
So, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I have motion to approve the surplus of two vehicles, a 2000 Chevy Blazer and a 2001 GMC van.
So, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I have motion to approve the bid extension for 2018, 19, as listed.
So, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the approval of the memorandum of agreement regarding the additional workday of 2017, 2018 with WIDA, that's the West Side Teachers Association, for 3/13? So, discussion.
So, that will be the day.
That will be one day of professional development.
Technology day.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the approval of the MOA with WIDA regarding additional workdays from 3/22? So, discussion. That's also a day of professional development.
On safety protocols and mental health issues.
Sorry. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the approval of the MOA with teaching assistants for the 3/13 snow day? So, discussion. That is also a day of professional development, that's technology.
Yes, we're working with them.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion for the approval of the MOA with paraleg professions regarding the old snow days? So, discussion. And that one is where they will work additional hours to make up the time list. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the approval of the by any review of compact line? So, so, discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the 2018, 2019 school district budget in the amount of $122,946,824. So, discussion. So, that represents a tax levying cap, new So that represents a tax limit cap increase of 3.13%. Those of you that not attended the budgets, that number of course is higher than the so-called 2%, but when you factor in the exclusions, which is a whole calculation that unfortunately the state really doesn't make people aware of, that 3.13% is actually 2%. And what I mean by that is that that is considered within the tax cap. So what that means is that you need 50% plus one vote for that to pass. All in favor? opposed, motion carries. Yes, that does include the workforce black card. Can I have a motion for the approval of the provision to the UPSCU memorandum of agreement regarding retirees?
So, discussion?
This is regarding the some of the retirees that we are actually approved tonight, which were about the incentive that we discussed last month. All in favor? opposed, motion carries. Okay, Mrs. Burns?
So we have kind of stuff going on this weekend and in the next few weeks. This weekend, our crowd will be performing at Lincoln Center. They have a couple of days of really fabulous activities and then they will be participating in a concert on Sunday evening. So that's very exciting for them. On Monday, our budget presentation began with a secondary presentation at 6:30 at the high school. And that will be followed at 7:30, I'm sorry, it's at Beach Street. Yes, it's at Beach Street. And that will be followed at 7:30 at Beach Street with an IGN presentation. Some of us had the opportunity to see this presentation when we had gone to the legislative breakfast back in January and Mrs. Canistra happened to be there as well and brought it back to the Health and Wellness Alliance. We realized that this was really a critical issue for the district and for all of us as parents. So I would encourage you to attend. It will be at Beach Street at 7:30. It will be presented by Dr. Ron DeSara. I think it will be well worth your time and the Health and Wellness Alliance has been very proactive in trying to address many of the issues that face us these days. And I think it's really important that we stay one step ahead of our children at home because they are so savvy in this regard. So I know Mr. Haran had sent out a couple of emails through the school messenger program just alerting you to that. There's a really interesting article that he had attached to those emails. I'm sure there'll be another reminder before Monday. But you're all welcome to attend that. Our, I guess fortunately or unfortunately, our planetarium presentations have also sold out, so to speak. They are very, very popular. We are looking at some additional ways that we can present that more welcome to the community. We know that people are very, very excited about that and about that opportunity for our students to become, as they were at one time, have more opportunity to visit the planetarium as part of their science curriculum. And finally, next weekend, we do have an entirely get set up with mindfulness training for some of our staff members. When that's completed, we'll have over 40 teachers that have participated in mindfulness training this year. So we're very, very excited in the direction that the district has been heading.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Other ladies?
I actually have one. Doctor, can you cut over there? Did I, did I cut out? I'm sorry. I just wanted to recognize, tell you, congratulations on successfully, as if I made your dissertation and receiving status. It's very exciting. I don't know, maybe we congratulated him I wasn't here, but I see you here tonight. So I just wanted to tell you.
Okay, members of the public.
Good evening, everyone. I have some questions regarding the school safety of the West Side of the school district. I had exchanged emails with Mr. Burns, going back and forth. I wasn't able to make last one's meeting, but my question to the board and to the administrators is what is the possibility of putting armed guards, not armed teachers, armed guards in the school? My daughter goes to Paul J. Blue. You folks know probably better than I do. They have that courtyard in the middle of the school that has access to some of the classrooms. We have one security guard in that school that is on off. I'm not even talking about a guy who questions the gun. I'm talking about a knife, a bat. Mr. Brady, growing up, I figured you knew Brady about camera systems. All that's well and good. You're giving me three minutes to speak. It's almost time for a local police department. It's going to be maybe two minutes. So in the time that I'm okay speaking to you folks, think of the contract that happened, right? Suffolk County, they have an armored car. I know the department have, God forbid, there's a shooting going on in one of our school grounds. That armored car has to get from, yeah, to West Side of, or even if it's out on another pole. I asked patrol cops last week how many emergency service trucks do they put out on the local door? He didn't know, four, maybe six. So I don't know if you deal with Suffolk County, this department I have in the past. I don't have a lot of faith in them. I thank them for what they do. They do a special job, but if we're relying on them to respond, and Mr. Burns, you said you share the building plan and the local law enforcement, well, let's make sure that through the Suffolk sheriffs, the state troops, the department, because the state troops can have a hostile on Robert Moses, he can be here quicker than the 301 part that told us there. The Suffolk sheriff could be executing a warrant on George Street over here, he can be here. So we don't think it's never going to happen here, as the folks at Parkland, how they felt prior February 14th. As long as you guys have faith in the police department and the system, that's on you. I live a mile away, not you. My daughter's going to have a cell phone, six, seven, eight, three. If I get a text message, God forbid that there's something going on in the school, I can be here quicker than the local, right? We have good sand. There's cops there all the time with prisoners, gated places. Let's make sure they get on the fire. You're going to have more volunteer firemen here that can't do anything than you're going to have police in the first three, four minutes. And then when they get here, you said you're going to have an act of shooter. I think that's phenomenal. You could get plays from the club and school parents. When things go down and things hit the fan, the first response is they hit the fan as well, but it's not all. So you never could be prepared. You can have a great plan like you spoke about. It's never going to be perfect. There's a saying, and I know you folks might feel a little different than I do, the way you stop a bad guy with a gun is what a good guy would do. Now, that might not be your answer, and that the folks here might, but if someone comes in with a gun, the fellow that sit at the door, Paul J. Blue, did not stop him, let alone Beach Street. They did not, they did not stop their head. So my question again is, are you meeting and discussing armed guards? Maybe do a pilot program from now to the end of the year while starting next year? Or is it just not happening?
So I think I got the wrong answer. Oh, Dr. Stolp? Yeah. Actually, one of the things that we've reported on previously, and I've tried to get around to a bunch of PTA meetings to discuss, you know, sort of, the many measures that we've already put in place over the last two years. But one of the things that we are now seriously considering are armed guards. And the administration, and the administration is working on gathering fact data on that in terms of legal issues and costs. It is something that we are giving very serious consideration.
And I know over my time limit, but we can just end with this. I think it was Boyne Floyd School District right after the Parkland, forehand retired NYPD officers, you know, in school grounds. I'm retired from NYPD.
We can tell.
Make sure he can be better. The company will, just because he's retired law enforcement doesn't make him any better than the guy who stands up for J. Blue without it. So just do your homework. Maybe get a company to come in that has armed guards, whether they're civilians or the law enforcement, but if just don't drink the Kool-Aid.
If it makes you feel any better, by the way, Mr. Brady and Mr. Zado of the whole retired staff.
I know that's, yeah, I know that's, yeah. So, well, thank you very much. Now, we'll put it together and make it work.
Real quick, so you know, this is very fluid, right? We use that a lot, but it really is. I mean, we have to constantly review what we're thinking about, then we discuss it. So I mean, we're always, I mean, even beyond security and safety meetings, we're constantly talking about this with the whole board, the committee people. I mean, I'm more pressed to go down the aisle and start the shot, but I'm all into somebody talking about it. So we're all fully aware of it. We're all talking about it. We've discussed all these items and we certainly welcome anybody that has some suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Presser?
Hi, thank you, Jeff, to receive the great sort of little upset. And so pleased to hear that you guys all really on board with everything. I know my daughter comes home from middle school and she tells me that she knows exactly what to do, sort of lockdown drills and things like that. So I was really pleased. I guess I have a lot of questions that you didn't answer. You answered most of them already, so I won't, I won't take my three minutes. My district also had to go make up a snow day and RPD day was the active shooter training. Is that what you're doing? Is that what's happening? Excellent. I thought it was very important things I didn't know. And does all you staff attend, even your clarifol, your A's, things like that?
Ultimately, we will have everyone attend. This one is targeted primarily to the teachers and to the teaching assistants. And we held on two separate days and have choice for which day to go.
Great. Do the West Side doors lock from the inside? So are you talking about classroom doors or?
Yes, the classroom doors.
Classroom doors lock?
Because Suffolk County Police said that that one is determined, they lock from the outside. It really doesn't help. No, we don't have people having to step into. We did have that situation at the high school for some time in some of the other buildings, but that's not correct.
So, and they also had said about the barricade. I don't know if we looked into anything. My district, we just looked into the barricade. It's $50. You just wrote right down what I have to use or probably not, but I'm sure there's a lot of research. You can do some different things for that.
Is that the board thing?
Yeah. There was a couple of different ones. We're doing the.
Are you doing the magnet on the side of the door, the barricade that locks the door and always keep them locked?
So will the barricade, if you broke the glass, could it? No, it wouldn't be. Okay, so just a suggestion to look into that very inexpensive money well spent, safety is of no concern. And I just want to say that I do agree with the armed guard and I'm so glad they built the inside.
But by the way, I mentioned before that I tried to get around to a whole bunch of PTA meetings and I will say that from what I see, the support for the armed guards has been pretty significant. So if anybody wants to share, please, on either side. Mrs. Canistra?
Thank you. On a slightly different topic, I just wanted some clarification because there's been some different things being said at different schools. Parents who opt for their children out of the state testing and then bring them in later on in the day, is that considered an excused or unexcused lateness?
It's, it all depends on when the building finds out the information. If we know about it, why they're late, like for example, we sent a letter requesting to have that information by a day so the buildings couldn't do that. But I know on the day of testing, there were a lot of knowns, like one building reported they were like 40. So it might have been encoded incorrectly until they would find out from parent why. But if they came in late with no explanation, then yes, but we actually have it different. We have it as an excuse and that it was for what reason it was. Because they'd be coming in late due to the testing. So if we know in advance that the child is coming in late, so people sent in their letter by March 21st, 23rd, I think it was on the letter, and our staff encoded the absence in advance, just like there would a music lesson or a guidance visit or something like that. So it was encoded as an excused absence. We knew about it in advance. Even though we knew about a day or two or five before, even though it was an inconvenience, we still encoded it as an excused absence. But if people did not show up that, if kids didn't show up that day, they are unexcused until we know the why.
I guess that's a question about why that would be an excused absence. If it is required, it's not, you cannot have or not have. It's not a discussion about that. You are required by the laws of central village school. You have a very strict and stringent attendance policy. Why would that be considered an excused lateness?
I understand philosophically where you're coming from, Mrs. Canistra. However, and I'm not going to say I disagree with you because I happen to agree with you. However, in the interest of the fact that it is absolutely facilitating the process for our students who are testing and for our teachers and our principals, that some of the kids late entering late, we don't want to penalize the kids for that.
Mrs. Warren?
For those of you who, can you give me? For those of you who don't know, my name is Gloria Ruland. I've been a resident here for 25 years with four children through the district. I have been in education for 30 years as an infantry teacher for 26, professor of special education, and I am currently an administrator in a local neighboring school district. I want to start off by congratulating you, Dr. Ruland, for your Master of Leadership podcast. It's a huge honor and I'm happy to say that I share that honor with you. Yeah, it's fantastic.
So does that to Bridgman, right? Does that, did you bridge that?
Yeah, it's a lot. It's a fantastic, so weird. Congratulations to you too. Good for you. So that's wonderful to hear. I actually listen to your podcast. It's fantastic.
Thank you.
On another note as well. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I have a question and I know that you were probably anticipating my question and I'm grateful for your ears, but my question tonight is how, how do you know that what you're doing is, is working?
In regard to, you mean in regard to?
In regard to New York State scores and NAEP scores have been flat for the last 15 years and the reform movement has increased test scores. You know, why not embrace a new system of holistic education? I can share with you in my district, I know that you know that we're very progressive. We have a very different philosophy of education. I'm not saying one is right or one's wrong, I'm just saying that they're very different philosophies. We closed our reading gaps in the first year of holistic education. You know, the new NAEP scores just came out and there's been no change in 15 years. So I'm not, I agree with you, it's not about opting in or opting out, but wealth asset in education. I think at this point it's about equity for all children and making sure that we're moving forward for a 21st century education. So my question is, how do you know that what we're doing right now is in fact working?
When you and I met a few months ago, I asked you that exact same question. I think you might remember that. Yeah, who's so lucky, share.
I would love to share. Thank you for the invitation. In our district, as I mentioned, we closed all of our reading gaps. Our attendance is up. Our behavior referrals are less than half than they were a year ago before we started our holistic shift. Our parents are recording and the children are happy. Teacher morale is up. We don't care about state assessments. We trust our teachers. We know that our teachers understand by an act of formative and substantive assessment, we can do up to an extensive professional development. So I'm happy to share that, you know, my personal experience in shifting to whole child education and focusing on children and what's the most important to them has proven to be exceptionally successful. So my question is, how do you know that?
What's this for the question?
Well, you know, I, I.
Have you identified ours? Have you identified ours?
Identify, yeah. It's a good question. I love mindfulness and grateful for that. Thank you. I'm not here to attack in any way, shape or form. I bought my house 25 years ago because I'm a souled to be in West Side of, I value your time and dedication to the children. So I'm not here to attack. I'm here to question because my passion, and you know this, we've met so many times and you know this stuff, I'm. and you know, this stuff's learned, I'm really not here to attack. I'm just here to make sure that we're doing what's best for all of the children. And personally, you know, I did keep my children home for the mornings of the testing, and I know that you know this, because we did have some email contact and some private text messaging contact. I do believe that all of the children, regardless of whether the parents choose for them to test or not, we respect them alike, especially as an administrator, but we want to offer them quality educational experiences every day of school. So, I believe that those children shouldn't have to sit in the same rooms, children who are testing. Those children deserve a quiet sanctuary to take the test. I know I had to consult several children today after three and a half hours of testing. The children who aren't testing should be offered alternate opportunities while they're at school every day. I don't think they should have to sit in the same room. So, that's one part I believe at this point, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not good for argument, but at this point, I believe that the philosophy is a little more emphasized on the importance of ESSA, ninety-five percent participation.
Do you, do you not believe that you would have to answer to ESSA mentorship?
I believe that I believe.
How are we going to reconcile what we heard about ESSA? How do you reconcile that in your school, when you are identified as target? What, you know, how, how is that going to?
We're not really interested in that quite honestly. We're interested in developing the children so that they're able to meet their maximum potential. We're not really concerned with the guidelines of ESSA, because we believe that the rationale behind our approach is much more beneficial than what the state is ready to mandate, you know.
So, how do you know that that, what you're doing here at your elementary school level, you know, is laying that foundation for what the bench will have to experience at the middle school, at the high school, college readiness, or career readiness, you know, future? How do you know that?
Because when you develop children socially and emotionally, and you support their development in mental health, you know, emotionally, they're much better off to handle those types of situations as they grow. I don't believe that.
So, do you, do you not think that we're doing that here?
I, I, I'm not, I'm not here to attack on.
No, no, I know you're not here to attack.
No, I'm really not.
I know you're not. I know you're comfortable with the place, and I'm trying to understand. I'm trying to understand. Do you think that we're not addressing those things here?
My concern is.
In our schools, with our building principals and our staff.
And I want to say, I want to say publicly that I think our teachers are of the best quality. I respect every single one of our assistant teachers, you know, coming from that role of twenty-six years, I know that they do everything they can and invest into the, of the children. I also realize that in our vision and our mission, that stems from central, central office and what it is, you know, mind checks. So, you know, your question in asking us about the mandates and the ESSA, and then, you know, I, I feel like it comes a point that we have to realize that our system is antiquated. And, and I think that, you know, we keep putting these mandates on American education, you know, let's fix it. Let, the tests are better. They're not time now. I happen to disagree with that. I know you're going to cut me off because of my time, but I'm just trying to know. You know, the mandates just aren't working for the children, and I think that it does from a point where we have to say to the state and the federal government, we happen to disagree with you, because we're the trained experts in the field. We are the trained experts in the field. We know what's best for the children. And so, when the state comes to us, and I know that you know my superintendent, and I know that you know his philosophy, we say that we don't care about the, the repercussions because we haven't seen them to be dire. With doing what we've been doing for the last few years, we haven't lost a dime of funding. As a matter of fact, they, they tried to audit us. We said no, and they accepted, because we supported a rationale that was reasonable in the best interest of the children. And so, I come here today to just share with you that I'm eager to work alongside you in the best interest of the children. I give all of the children everything that they're entitled to outside of ESSA and state testing.
I think we do that, and I have to tell you, I think you know, because you have very talented children, that we have a very robust arts program. We have an incredible athletic program. Last year, we had a ninety-six percent graduation rate. Seventy percent of those students graduated with advanced designation on their diploma.
And I'm not here to question.
No, I don't know. My point is.
I'm, I'm not, I don't know that. I think our research program is of the best across all hands. So, I'm not, I'm not doubting what we have. I'm questioning the, the, the success of the vision and the mission in emphasizing certain aspects of our culture that might not be in the best interest of the children.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Melissa. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I just, I just would like to, you know, say to you that I can believe that we are representing the best interest of our children, and really, truly do. And, and I say that to you because the team that is currently working with the faculty and the administrators and the teachers really have gone above and beyond, I think, in the past, probably, I mean, I've been on this board for eleven years. When I first came on this board, there were a lot of things wrong with the curriculum and the structure of education in this school district. The amount of professional development and, and teamwork that I've seen over the past four or five years has been extraordinary. You may not see that on your level of, of your child or your school. I don't know why, but there are so many project-based learning examples that are going on in our classrooms that don't revolve only around state testing. We are not a state testing school district.
I have not lived for the state. I, I, I hear you, and I thank you for your, for your remarks. I have to respectfully disagree only because I have been asked to come tonight to speak on a large part of our community. I've spent, I think that you know this, the last several weeks in meetings, requested by community members, I think maybe because they know my education and my, 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 my vision and my mission are quite public, but people feel, and I say this very respectfully, people feel confused. And I'm not trying to attack, but there wasn't any communication on the elementary level regarding start times for testing, regarding what time parents had to bring their children to school, and, and many parents said, you know what? Screw it. I'm just going to drop my kids off in the morning. And then those children were subjected to sitting in a classroom with other children who were testing, and quite frankly, I feel that's an injustice, and I can share with you.
So, we're on two different subjects, though, right?
No, no.
Just now we're on testing. You're, you're. But, but, but we're talking about the overall structure.
Okay, but you, your last comment, if you, if you don't mind, was that you feel that we have a lot of project-based learning, and I agree with you. I'm not, I'm not saying anything, but what I'm sharing with you, and my reason for speaking is because I've been called upon by a wide portion of the district, and I'm sharing with you because, and, and a fact is a fact. I'm not here to argue. I, I, I'm really a lover, not a fighter, okay? But I do want to share with you that I know a lot of the people sitting here are agreeing and, and silently, and I respect that some people are not comfortable speaking publicly. I'm welcome to speak on them. You have, because they've asked me. So, all I'm saying to you is that parents feel confused. Parents feel disrespected in that, you know, they didn't have the information they needed for their children on these days. And so, some children were forced to, to be dropped off to school early in the morning. They sat, whatever the case may be, because we've had that conversation. So, so what I think, what I, what I'm asking for, we have with the community, is a little more transparency, a consideration of a shift in away from ESSA and, and the emphasis on state testing, and more what you are looking into in mindfulness and project-based learning, and, and activities that promote opportunities for children to tap into their personal talents and passion.
Thank you, Ms. Quon.
Thank you. I feel like I'm not allowed to come up here because you're not speaking for everybody in the community, and you're not speaking for me. I know our school district isn't perfect, and I know I've stood up here plenty of times and brought up my concerns, but I think that with the funding that you have to work with and all of the mandates that you have for Albany, I think that you guys are doing a fantastic job educating our children. And I find Mrs. Quon's statements to be contradicting to themselves. She said one thing, and then she said another, which implied that you're not doing the job. And I just felt like I had to stand up and say she's not speaking for me, she's not speaking for many people that I know. I don't know anybody who's ever asked their opinion in my circle of friends about how they felt about what was going on in the school district. So, while our school district isn't perfect, I'm really happy with my kids' education. I'm happy with their teachers. I'm happy with the teachers I have in the elementary school. I'm more than happy with what my children are doing in middle school. I love their principals. I love the teachers, and I think that you guys are doing a good job under the circumstances. And as far as the children that sat in the classrooms and took the test, my question is, if people think, I, I have to say, I don't think that there's an imperative as to know how I feel about the test. I don't think that it's a good measure of how our children are doing or how good a job the teachers have done teaching. I understand you're saving too with the tests that are in place today, but the kids that did sit for the test, if you did take the kids out of the room and had them do activities, most opt-out people feel that the test is punishing to children. They feel that is, you know, age inappropriate, which I agree with, but then if you take the kids that are opting out, out of the classroom, then you're adding an insult to injury to the kids that are sitting for the test, because then they're missing out on a fun activity. Is it an ideal situation to have the kids sit in the classroom and read the whole time? It's not ideal, but I don't think that you should punish the children that have to sit for the test. So, I, I don't know what else you could do to make it there across the board. But with that said, I think that for somebody to come up here and say that they're speaking in the text, I feel like that was the right thing, so I thought you may need to come up here and say something. And that's it. Thank you for your.
You know, I just wanted to say, you know, it's a terrible situation in the heart of South, and we really are focused in a rock and hard place. I don't think anybody up here, you know, is, believes that if you don't want your children sitting for the test, you don't want your children sitting for the test. You know, coming to some kind of, you know, way to manage the day for the building principals is very exhausting. It's very hard for them to, you know, give everybody what they need at all different times, and they, they have to get through that period with that. The building principals are very confident about managing their buildings. We do not do that. They do not do that. They give that to them to do. It's their building, it's their staff, it's their students. And so, communication in terms of what is going on that day, how the building's going to operate, that should go through your building principal. A PTA meeting talked about it prior to that test period, so everybody does know what is going on, but there is no complete district policy that's going to stay, how many tests are going to operate, how big is it going to operate, and so on and so forth. I, I think that that is how we live.
Just to clarify, every year, we ask, you know, the principals, they go to their staff, they go to the teachers, and they ask how they want to, how would they like to administer it. I mean, for efficiency, you could say you can have test rooms and do something in another place, but when it comes right down to it, in fact, the teachers feel this way, and the students feel this way, they want their classroom teacher to be the one to administer the test that they're taking it. So, when that's, when we're able to do that, that seems to be in the best interest at the time. After this is over, the building principals will meet with the teachers again and say, okay, what can we do? What can we tweak? What can we finish? I mean, there, I know that in some buildings, they, they change other things because they didn't want students to miss their specials, their on-court classes, like music and art, and so it was a Saturday start time for them, because that's something that happened last year. They missed parts of it, and they want to ensure that. So, and that will go back, but you know, that also costs them other, other consequences. So, they'll go back and talk to the teachers and say, okay, so how did this work? What should we do differently next year?
Well, hopefully, the state stops being schizophrenic, and they figure out how to, you know, reconcile.